For joining this Food Network for Social Businesses in Wales. The theme of today's network is around sustainability and we've got some really exciting speakers going to tell us about the work that they're all doing across Wales and beyond. And so it's really lovely to see you all today. And if you have just joined the call late, we are recording this session. And so you're more than welcome to change your name, take your video off. And if you would like to promote your business, please put your name in there. You can change your name where the three little dots are that says more. And rename yourself and put your business name there and promote yourself. That's what this is all about, making connections for you guys. So the way today's session will work, I'll just show you now who we've got. Hopefully, can you all see that there? So we've got five speakers this morning. And we're going to have a talk from Louisa from Toast Ale in London. It's really exciting to hear about what they're doing. And the Seasonarians, a new start in West Wales. And then we're going to hear from Steve at RCMA Markets. And then we're going to hear from Katie from a new initiative called the Food Policy Alliance. And then finally, last but not least, Sarah from Fairshay Cramery will tell us all about their food sharing at work. So it's really exciting to hear what they are doing already in this field of sustainability. But we'd really also like to hear from you. You're really welcome to pop in the chat if you would like to have a bit of time to share your ideas or your projects, just pop it in the chat. And we'll try and give you some time to discuss that as well. Or if you've got any thoughts on what we need to be doing in the field of sustainability in Wales and with social enterprises, please pop it all in there. We'd love to hear your views. And we've got a bit of time at the end for news roundup. So I've got a few things to announce to you, just things that might help. Now, all this information will be on a padlet that we'll send the link to you. So we're going to try and pop that in the chat shortly. If you don't know, a padlet is a bit like a kind of online library. So all of this, the presentation links to all kinds of things will be in there. And also for you, for social enterprises, I've set it so that you can hopefully edit it. And you can pop a link to your website or your social media page in there. You'll see it's fairly straightforward. So when you get the link to that, do have a look. So don't worry about taking notes, it will all be there. And what else to tell you? So don't forget, if you're not already a client of Social Business Wales, if you have a food business or if you've got a friend who's involved in one, maybe you might be a network that works with other businesses and not a social enterprise yourself. There's obviously support through our business advisors for new start social enterprises and also growth social enterprises. If you need help with sustainability, then our advisors can help do a piece of work with you on that. Okay, so I think we're all ready to go. And I'd like to welcome our first speaker then, Louisa, are you there Louisa?
I'm here.
Brilliant, okay. I'll just bear with me one sec. So Louisa, can you tell us a little about Toast Ale and your work? That'd be fantastic.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here today. So yes, I'm a co-founder and chief operating officer at Toast Ale. And we brew craft beer using surplus bread from the bakery industry. We set up the business nearly five years ago. We're celebrating our fifth birthday next month. And we set the business up to be truly circular so that we are working to eliminate one of the biggest environmental problems that we face. Food production itself is responsible for a huge amount of environmental problems. It's the biggest contributor to climate change. About 30% of greenhouse gases are due to the food system. It's also a big driver of deforestation, of freshwater use and air pollution, water pollution, et cetera. And yet we're wasting a third globally of all of the food that we're producing. It doesn't need to be this way. There are very simple things that can be done to reduce food waste in line with one of the Sustainable Development Goals, Sustainable Development Goals 12.3, which is all about halving food waste and food loss. So we chose to focus on bread because it is one of the most wasted household food items. It means that people can identify with it as, you know, something that everybody eats every day pretty much. But also because it was one of the original ways in which beer was brewed. The whole concept of fermentation was about preserving the calories in food and making them last for longer. Some of the very earliest recipes for producing beer were based on the fermentation of bread essentially. Probably not the sort of beer we'd be drinking today, it was more like an alcoholic porridge. So we've come a long way, but there are still lots of things that we can learn from how we did things in the past. And by using bread, not only are we preventing bread from going to waste, we're also reducing the amount of barley that we need to brew the beer, sorry. So we're essentially taking one grain and replacing it with another. Barley is usually the main base of grain for producing beer. And barley has a huge environmental footprint. It's one of the biggest components of a beer's footprint along with its packaging. So by reducing the amount of barley that we need, we're also reducing the footprint of our beer. And to date, we've brewed with about two million slices of bread. And I have so many people say to me, but I don't waste bread, you know, I always eat bread. We're taking it from the supply chain. So working with the sandwich industry predominantly, taking those, if you think about the sandwiches that we buy packaged in shops, they ever use the heel ends, the final slices of the loaf. So we work with the sandwich industry to segregate those and to use that fresh bread that doesn't have a market to produce our beer. We're also a social enterprise, which means that we make profits, we're a profit business. But the way we use our profits is very different. All of our profits, we've dedicated to charities that are working to change some of the underlying causes of food waste, looking at systemic issues at a government and industry level. What we're trying to do is use a product to solve an immediate problem, but also work with others who can change the system for, you know, to have a longer term impact. And we're trying to collaborate with breweries all across the world. We've done about 60 collaborations to date, trying to share our knowledge and experience with others. Because we are a tiny company, there's only six of us in the team. We're still very small and our impact therefore is limited. If we can get the whole industry to be brewing with bread, then we can really significantly reduce food waste. And we've seen quite a few companies start to incorporate this BrewDog, for example, announced earlier, well, towards the end of last year, that they're going to produce one of their beers with bread as well. And we spent two months advising them on how to do that. So that for us is a huge impact win. And also our recipe is open source. So if you're a home brewer and you want to have a go at brewing, either using bread that you have surplus at home or maybe working with your local bakery, then do get involved as well. But really, our whole ethos is about being positive, not telling people that we need to change our lives in a way that means sacrificing or choosing something that maybe is not as good as, you know, a more damaging product. It's about celebrating the positive action that we can all take and that we can all influence as well just by enjoying a delicious beer. It's a bit early in the morning maybe to be talking about beer. But I've got a really nice one to show you that's non-alcoholic. And I'll talk to you a little bit just about the campaign that we're running at the moment. So our new campaign is called Rise Up. It is about educating people about some of those environmental challenges and the solutions to them in the run-up to COP26, which is being hosted in Glasgow in November of this year. We wanted to connect the food system with climate change and with biodiversity loss and really galvanize action for change. So we've got a series of seven beers that have been launched, each that talks about part of the ecological crisis. We had a chocolate stout with Divine Chocolate last year that was all about forestry, about the rate of deforestation and the unsustainable way in which we're managing our forests. And yet the opportunity that we have by protecting them and then regenerating forestry to mitigate climate change and to create a better planet for all of us. This new one that we've got at the moment is made with lemongrass tea from tea pigs. This one is a low alcohol lager. And this one is all about the oceans, so raising awareness of some of the damage that's being done to the oceans through overfishing, through the fishing methods that we're using. But also climate change itself is affecting the oceans as the oceans, which is a major resource in terms of tackling climate change because the oceans absorb carbon dioxide and trap it. And so it's a major carbon sink, but by doing so, it is also changing the acidity of the water and yet damaging life and species in the oceans. And then plastic being another huge problem within the oceans. Tea pigs, we chose as a partner because they're doing a lot of work to eliminate. They have eliminated plastic from their tea bags and all of their packaging. And then we've got five more beers coming. Each of those, again, it's with a company that we have identified as doing work to tackle some of the challenges so that we can communicate that to our customers. And each of those companies are also a B Corp. So for those that don't know about B Corp community, they're all businesses that have met minimum standards and have certified of meeting those standards around environmental and social responsibility. Really fantastic businesses from tiny, sort of one-person businesses up to some multinational companies. And we're very proud to be a B Corp ourselves. So it's fantastic to be working with a community of other businesses that are all doing their bit. But what we're trying to do a little bit through this campaign is to tell people that we're not just consumers. We can think about the products we buy and the way that we live our lives, but we're also citizens. And our MPs are there to represent us in Parliament. So we're asking people to write to their MP and ask them to stand up for climate and nature in food policy so that we can start to really change the food system, to take what is a broken food system that's not working at the moment for people and planet and to fix that so that we can regenerate the planet and yet have a better future for all of us.
That's brilliant, thank you. That's some really awesome things there, your whole business model sounds amazing there Louisa. Thank you, thank you so much for taking time out to share that with us. I can't see at the moment if there are questions in the chat for you. Yes, Steve's clapping. But if you have got a question for Louisa, want to know more about anything, pop it in the chat there, that'd be fantastic. And we will have time for questions shortly. So let's go on now to Gareth. So I think we've got Gareth Jones now from Seasonarians. Are you there Gareth?
I am, yes, good morning, everybody.
Hi, that's great, thank you so much for joining us. Can you tell us a little bit about Seasonarians? And I know at the last network Gareth introduced the idea. And I think everyone wants to know a bit more about what it was and when you'd be launching, so over to you.
Yeah, thank you Elizabeth, thank you very much for inviting me to say a few words today. Seasonarians, so yeah, my name's Gareth Jones. What is Seasonarians? Well, it's all about eating sort of seasonally and locally. So it's much talked about, but no one's ever put a name to it or put a framework around it. So I actually work in the dairy industry and a colleague of mine, Sari Hartson, who's a co-founder, has her own flock of sheep, so she's producing lamb. And we felt that there was, okay, there's a place for veganism and vegetarianism. But if you want to eat locally and seasonally, what's it called? And how do you put a framework around it? So we thought, well, why not become a Seasonarian? So we came up with this idea last year in sort of February. We then came up with a traffic light system to put some sort of framework around it. So Green Plus is local, produced within sort of 50 miles. Greens UK, as you can see, amber is Europe and red is produced outside Europe. So the idea was to get labelling onto food. We thought fruit and veg was really the first thing to go at because so much of that is imported just by its very nature, particularly fruit. So we then thought we need a website. So we then got a third founder involved, Izzy Fisk. And during lockdown, that was built sort of April and May last year. Launched the concept end of June with a website. Obviously then we had to set up a Facebook page and become proactive. So what the first thing to do was get the labelling into a shop. And we approached Four Seasons, which is a fruit and veg shop in Pembrokeshire, near Temby. We had a contact and they trialled the system for us in their shop and went down very well. Very good response. So we then had to think about how we sort of really move this on and how we can finance it and how we can get it into more shops. So because I work full-time in the dairy industry, Sari decided to take that on and to approach some shops in the area, see if they're interested in putting our labelling in, which she did last year. So we've now got a labelling into, I think it's about five shops in Pembrokeshire. And what we're doing is to get the message out there. We're charging £50 to go on the website, get social media coverage for that and provide labels for the area in the shop as well. So that went very well. I was then introduced to Wales Cooperative Centre because we then need to think about how we got ourselves incorporated. So a big thank you there to Serene Allen for helping us through that sort of stage. And after a further discussion, decided that CIC was the thing to go for because it's sending out exactly the right sort of message. So we became incorporated in December. I then registered the Seasonarian name as well as a trademark. And that's just going through its last couple of months to get approval, but I think that should go through fine. So that was 2020, 2021 is, things moved on quite rapidly really. We took on our first online delivery shop based in Cardiff. So for this, that they get our logos, our labelling to go on their website and they can then label up. They got a local fruit and veg box this particular month, they can use that on the website. So people logging on can see at a glance where rings come from that particular month. We then got some interest from local meat producers who are very interested in using our Green Plus label because it's sending out all the right messages that it's been produced and consumed in sort of 50 mile radius. So we've taken on three local meat producers. That then led us to a butcher in Temby, the Copper Hog, who really likes the idea. So he's going to label up, that's going in next week, he's going to label up all his meat because he's very proud of the fact that he's got a lot of local meat in a shop and only a couple of sort of amber things coming in from Denmark. So that's going on because of my background in the dairy industry. I then thought, well, milk vending machines really are becoming very popular. And if they want to shout more about their milk and how local it is, then that would be a good market. So we've taken four milk vending machines on. They get a big Green Plus label on the vending machine. They can use our labelling on Facebook and on their websites. And again, it's a very positive story for them. And then our local pub got to hear about it, seen us on Facebook and he's keen to incorporate into his menu, which could open up another whole sort of area for us really with pubs and restaurants. So that's sort of where we got to so far. Looking ahead, need to consider auditing to give the thing a bit more backbone, most probably. Need to consider how we charge people. We are very competitive, very cheap at the moment, but we need to do that to get the message out. Need to continue building up social media presence. Continue to broaden our appeal, I suppose really, and then possibly look at some funding. But that's our sort of journey so far really. So thank you Elizabeth, that's Seasonarians in a nutshell.
Thank you, that's really interesting. It's great to hear how it's developing and I'm pretty sure people will have questions for you about that. I remember the last talk, we also had Ellen, who was working with Jennifer's Coffee, Fairtrade Coffee from Uganda. And she was saying it would be a perfect marriage with some of your milk there. Okay, so let's move on to our next speaker and then we'll have a little gap for questions. So we've got Steve now. So some of you may know Steve already. Steve is one of the founding directors of Riverside Markets or RCMA, they're also called. Is there Steve? Oh, you're on mute, sorry.
Honestly, the silliest Zoom mistake you can make and I still made it.
We all make it. Yeah, so Steve's going to tell us, yeah, there you go. Steve's going to tell us a little bit about RCMA Markets and how they're experiencing the demand really for local and fresh produce. Over to you Steve.
Thanks so much. And yeah, Riverside, we have got a bit of a snappier name now. We do tend to call ourselves Riverside Real Food. But RCMA stands for Riverside Community Market Association, which was how we were set up all those years ago. And I think we're into our 22nd year in Riverside, 10 years in Rothes and six or seven years in Rubina. So you can imagine we've learnt a lot over the years. And but I wanted to start out, so I don't forget, just to say, I mean, for me, this is so tremendously optimistic to hear about all this stuff because it means, when I always cringe when people talk about we're going to go back to normal because I really don't want to go back to that normal. I want to go forward to a different kind of normal. And these things, Toast and the Seasonarians, it's all part of that movement. But you know, there, I don't know if anyone else has got so many in their diary at the moment. I seem to have quite a lot of Zoom meetings to do with. I've got, there's a fair food forum on Fridays, there's shopper of the future meetings going on. There's really a lot. And you know, one of the feelings I have is that I think it's really important that all of us kind of can link in together as much as we possibly can. And I've set up a little bit of a mailing list because I seem to be getting so many events coming in. If anyone would like to be included in my little informal mailing list of things that are going on, please just drop me a line and I'll put you on.
Yeah, put your email in the chat Steve, so people have got that, okay, thanks.
I will do, so yeah, positive times. And for us, also positive, I mean, we really did not know what to expect. We closed down the markets to start with when things were looking really quite scary. We just didn't know what to do. We felt, some people I know kept markets open, but we were, we just decided as a board, look, we better, we've got to be careful here, that's got to be our first priority. We just wanted to take some time to see how things went. But then if there was a positive, I mean, with hindsight, I'm not sure that we needed to have done that, but better safe than sorry, of course. And at least when we did reopen and we had figured out the marshalling and we were 100% sure it would be completely safe, you know, for everyone. And the sort of gratitude that people had, you know, our absence had made their stomachs grow fonder towards us was really heartening, you know, the loyalty in the sense that people had missed it. Well, then, since then, what we found, and we really did not expect this, we literally had no idea what to expect. But all of our markets are significantly busier than they were. And that's particularly noticeable at the two small markets, one in Rubina on a Friday morning, which was really quite a tiny little, you know, it's sort of at least doubled in size. And also Rothes on the other side of Cardiff is really, is a lot busier. And you know, thinking onto, well, why is this? You know, and I think, well, yeah, we could see that there's a number of reasons. People are just looking for more things to do, you know, like with reasons to go out, something where they can go where it's safe. But it is also, it is sociable. And I suppose, you know, look, this was always the aim with the markets. They were not just retailing opportunities. The idea of a market for me was always, well, this is a community building place. This is where people can meet up and there's a sense of sharing, also the sense of seeing and eating veg that's been grown 10 miles away, all of the benefits that, you know, come from feeling that connection with your local environment. The pleasure of actually waiting to eat strawberries until they come into season. And then that sort of wonderful, you know, surprise when there they are. And of course, they taste fantastic and then, okay, then they're gone, but all right. Somehow the idea of eating strawberries from America, you know, let's hope. Well, Seasonarians, definitely, I'm into that because it's just a win on every level as far as I'm concerned. Not to mention the economy, economic benefits as well. So that's been really encouraging for us, you know, the fact that people maybe, as I said, looking for something to do. Also more people, I think, having, we've all had our habits broken really. And then this sort of chance to have a bit of a rethink, you know, why, why are we buying strawberries from America? You know, why aren't we buying our own lamb, our own veg? Why are we flying stuff? My optimistic sense is, or I should say, my optimistic self feels that people won't want to go back to that crazy, insane food system that was just damaging on every level as far as I could see. You know, why are we sending our wonderful lamb to France? Why aren't we eating it ourselves? And of course, post Brexit, I've been hearing little bits and pieces on the news of all the problems with exporting food now. The, again, let's hope if there is a silver lining to that, it will be that, well, okay, then we'll, actually, there was a story on the radio last week, somebody who'd landed some fish off the coast of Pembrokeshire. Instead of sending it to France, they sent a message out to a bunch of restaurants and people that they knew and they sold it all on the quayside and the fisherman made double the money that he would have done if he'd exported it, you know. So it just, for me, eating local food is one of the few things where I cannot see a downside to it. Other than the fact that if I have to give up bananas, that is going to be tough for me because I'm very fond of them. So I have a little excuse to myself, which is, you know, we'll eat anything and everything local except where it can't be produced here. And I suppose I am able to accept the idea that if we eat some imported things, there are countries where their economy depends on it. I mean, Cuba popped into my mind because it's a country that, where I'd be quite happy to support their economy. That there is some sort of balance here, I feel. But I did hear a rumour that somebody is setting up an olive plantation somewhere in West Wales, you know. So who knows, you know, because I'm quite an olive fan as well. So I just want to say really, from what we've seen, the good news is, you know, there seems to be more and more interest in local. I don't think if it grows too much more, you know, we always knew a dilemma for us would be if we were absolutely successful in encouraging more and more people to eat local, we wouldn't be able to keep up with demand. And these are the couple of issues right now, which, you know, potentially we could see in the future. There are not enough people producing food in Wales. There's just not enough locally produced veg. The demand is going to outstrip supply, I think, soon. And so I mean, my hope is that Welsh Government will recognise that and invest in the training, invest in making land available, because I just think there will be more and more demand. And really, you know, growing organic veg locally, it's hard work, but not such a bad way to make a living for people that would like to do that. Or just the last thing I'd say is trying to keep up with the 21st century. Are we in the 21st now? Yeah. We're looking at all the possibilities of more online shopping. I wouldn't say we're going to try to be a sort of veg version of Amazon because that's not what we're about at all. We're about, as I said, the markets are more than just selling and buying, they're about building community. But at the same time, we recognise there may be people who can't come to the market. Also a sense of the people getting used to things being really easy. And so we've commissioned some research, we're really actively looking at that. We don't want to be left behind, if you like, you know. And so what I hope is that we'll manage to combine the best of the traditional, all the good things about going to a market along with the best of the advantages that ordering online can bring. That's us.
Thank you very much Steve, that's brilliant. Thank you for that contribution. So what we'll do now, it's just going to check with my colleague Ebony if there's any questions for any of the first three speakers. So were there any questions in the chat for Louisa and Gareth and Steve? Can you see anything?
Let me just start my video there. So we've had quite a few questions, we've had some great networking in the chat room.
Brilliant.
Interesting stuff, some organisations on the lookout for sustainable food suppliers in the session today as well. So that's brilliant. We do have some specific questions. So there's one for Louisa here. How much bread do you typically use to make a batch?
It depends on the batch size, but at the moment it's about 250 kilos of fresh bread, which obviously the weight of that is reduced because we have to now dry the bread before we use it for brewing. The challenge with brewing is you need to be able to control, well, so many different factors. But one of them is the temperature of the water. It's really important to have the right temperature so that the yeast works as you're expecting it to. So if we add a whole load of bread that carries a lot of water, it's reducing the temperature. bread that carries a lot of water, it's reducing the temperature in the mash tun. So yeah, it's about 250 kilos, I'd say, average of the fresh bread, a bit less when it's dried.
Right, it sounds like a fine art to me. So just, there was another question in relation to that, Louisa, as well, more of a logistical question, this one. So how do you collect up all the waste bread from sandwich companies? Just wondering how that works in relation to the amount of bread you need to brew a batch.
So we work with a key supplier now. When I, when we first started out, I was calling around lots and lots of little bakeries where we were based and taking, you know, a few loads from here, a few loads from there. And that logistically was a nightmare, as well as other challenges like the need for traceability for, you know, from an allergens perspective. So now we, well, we, last year, we're working with a one single sandwich factory and they usually would be paying for a waste management company to take this bread away, where it was being used for either anaerobic digestion or it was going, in some cases, to landfill. So for them, us taking it is a cost saving. And they have their trucks on the road anyway that are delivering sandwiches to universities and retailers. So they literally would put, it was about one day's worth of surplus crusts for them that was enough bread for an entire brew for us. They would put a pallet of that onto their trucks and then just deliver it to us for free. We would give them some beer in return. So it was a really nice exchange. Unfortunately, they went into administration at the beginning of lockdown because they're reliant on the food to go market, which just, you know, it closed. So we started working with a bakery that supply whole loaves to supermarkets. But when they get forecasts for loaves, those forecasts, they have to be able to guarantee they'll meet those, but often they change depending on the supermarket's final order. So ends up with whole loaves. And at the moment, we're working with them, which is actually fantastic because they use the residual heat from their ovens to dry the bread for us as well. So we're able to to dry the bread without any additional energy requirements as well. But yeah, really important just to have one bigger key supplier.
Wow, thank you, Louise. So just a question. I mean, there's been lots of comments about the bananas. We've got a big issue with the bananas in the chat room.
I like, I like my fair trade bananas. We had a fair trade banana producer came to stay at my house once and it was great fun. Definitely up for them. Yeah, sorry, time for one more.
Gareth, you obviously, you had a couple of points as well. I think it was actually Steve about economies that depend on fruit exports and how we can support those economies going forward with these agendas as well. We've got another question here for you, Gareth. Has the, have the seasonarians project, has the seasonarians project received any funding support so far?
No, not a penny. I have been in conversation with, well, the reason I was put on to the Wales Cooperative Centre was by Jeremy Bowen Rees, who's a consultant down here. I'm going to ask him about funding originally. He thought we needed a bit more of a track record to go on. So, but the way we're taking people on, I would hope that that's something we could address. I'll be looking to advice on that fairly shortly, really.
Brilliant, thank you. I have a question for you here. Are people also looking for more sources of produce that is local to where they live? As well as factoring into their daily exercise, frustrating not to be able to carry out onsite research at the moment is the comment at the end of that question.
Who was that for, Ebony?
That was for Steve.
Yeah, I can only agree. I mean, we are always looking for new producers and part of our role has been a bit of an incubator, you know, for people. The great thing about starting at the market is it's pretty low cost. And we've incubated a few people who've sort of started out on a very small basis. We have a woman at the moment who she's got, all she sells is jars of this homemade kimchi, wonderful kind of Korean pickle. And she started really, really small and, you know, hopefully will help her to grow. One of the beauties of selling at a market is you do get very direct customer feedback, you know, you get a chance to talk and I mean, of course, we're observing all the distancing and the people aren't using money anymore. But I think we've found that I am really delighted that we have found a sort of a very safe way for people to still be able to communicate. And, you know, we're all learning all the time. I mean, life doesn't stand still at all. And retail particularly, I think, is evolving in all sorts of interesting ways. And, you know, like I said, I suppose we want to try and keep up with new trends, definitely encouraging new people to grow. I would love to see somebody, for example, growing garlic, you know, garlic is not such a hard thing to grow and there's a big demand for it. I don't know why we're not growing garlic in Wales. There's lots of things we know from our own experience because we also helped to set up a small organic farm near Cowbridge. And, you know, under a polytunnel, you could grow peppers, cucumbers, aubergines, you know, we can grow all sorts of stuff in Wales that we mostly import. And I just would love to see, I guess, I'd love to see Welsh Government getting behind this and sort of recognising, especially post Brexit, you know, let's, let's, let's just grow more and more of what we eat locally.
Definitely. And Ken's made a quick comment on that as well, really. Just, just wondering where the Welsh Government resources are to encourage more people to transition to fill new emerging post Brexit UK markets.
Can we, can we save that one, Ebony? Because I think maybe our next speaker can help perhaps give a bit of background to that. Is that all right?
I think that's it from me then.
Brilliant. Thank you so much for rounding those up. It's not an easy job. Thank you. So we're going to move on now, on that note, because it's, it's kind of relevant to our next speaker, hopefully. So we've got two more speakers and then we've got maybe time for some contributions from you guys, because I know hopefully there's someone just joined the chat who tell us a bit more about an innovative growing project, project they've got as well. So, and I'm sorry, the timings are going a bit slower than anticipated. It's just you're all so interesting. So now we're going to hear from Katie Palmer. Hi, Katie. Hope you're still there. I hope she hasn't had to run away. Katie is going to tell us about a new initiative called the Food Alliance Cymru. I hope I've got that right. And she's also part of an organisation called Food Sense Wales. Are you there, Katie?
I am here, yeah. In fact, in fact, that's probably a little bit the wrong way around. Well, I'm program manager at Food Sense Wales. And we're part of the Food Policy Alliance Cymru Coalition. And yeah, so I just really wanted to, I guess, introduce Food Sense Wales to you today and introduce Food Policy Alliance Cymru as well. And I think, you know, actually, I feel like my job's been done by Louisa this morning because she did such a fantastic job of kind of joining the dots on the, all the different elements of the food system that we need to be thinking about this morning. But Food Sense Wales is an organisation that is looking to basically join the food, the dots up on the food system in Wales. And we're working with organisations, civil society, government in trying to join up all elements of the food system and link those back to ensure that we have look after the health of the planet and our communities in Wales. And we do that in a couple of ways. One of those is through delivering programmes on the ground. So people may be familiar with Peas Please, which is about trying to drive up vegetable consumption. And I believe Pearl came and spoke to the group a few months ago.
That's right.
About Food Cardiff and the Sustainable Food Places approach, and she's on the, on the call today. And it's quite exciting at the moment because we're in the process of bringing the Sustainable Food Places approach to Wales more broadly. And we have four additional places in Wales that are about to start delivering on that approach. We also have Food Cardiff, obviously, which is a founder member of the Sustainable Food Places network. And it was great to see Steve here today because he was involved at the very beginning of the Food Cardiff journey back in 2014, I think it was, Steve. And we also have Food Vale now, and we have Louise on the, on the call here today, who's leading the charge in the Val of Glamorgan on that agenda as well. So we're delivering programmes on the ground to really kind of, I guess, provide an evidence base and show things work and then try and get those things scaled up. So the School Holiday Enrichment Programme, which was developed back in 2015, was piloted in Cardiff. And this is an approach which is about trying to support families and children during the long summer holidays with activities, good nutrition, learning about food and nutrition, but also other enrichment activities and physical activity as well. And that's a programme now that's being rolled out across Wales and Welsh Government have committed 4.9 million pounds to that, to that programme. And in fact, the Education Minister was on Wales Live last night talking about it as a, as a potential tool to support catch up over the summer. And then the other aspect that we're working in is kind of in the advocacy space. So we're part of the Anti Poverty Coalition, the Oxford Cymru looks after. And we're also the founding member of Food Policy Alliance Cymru. And Food Policy Alliance Cymru is really trying to build a collective vision for the food system in Wales. And we really came together around trying to influence Future Generations Commissioner to kind of raise the agenda of food within, within the thinking of the Future Generations Office, because food has kind of been quite absent from, from thinking really around the Future Generations piece. And her 2020 report included lots on food. So we were, we were successful in that respect. And then we've really turned our attention to looking at how we can put forward ideas really for the next government. And you'll see from the slide, the different members that are involved in the, in the alliance. And what we're really calling for is for government to appoint an independent cross-sector food system commission. And we want them to be tasked with developing a roadmap to deliver a food system which is fit for future generations. And that's aligned with the principles of agroecology. And we've called for six areas that that roadmap should, should consider. And really, what this is all about is trying to make sure that we have a food system in Wales, which is connecting our agriculture policy with our kind of food and drinks policy, with our public health policy. And at the same time, making sure that we're linking that into, you know, the challenges that we have around climate change and nature loss. And again, as Louise very pointed out very well, I think I'll, I'll take you quickly through these six points, but I would, it would be great to hear Louise kind of reflect back on how the business, her business model kind of picks up probably on at least, I would say, four or five of these, of these six, of these six items. So the first, the first area is around making sure that we've got enough food of a good quality for everybody in Wales. And we want to eliminate the need for food banks so that everybody in Wales has got access to the food they need in a dignified way in order to live a healthy life. So some of this is about thinking about the kind of the welfare aspect of how the welfare system touches on food. Food poverty, which is a term that often here is not a thing in itself. It's a symptom of broader poverty. It's a symptom of jobs that don't pay a fair wage. And it's a symptom of a welfare system that isn't currently fit, fit for purpose. So it's how food links into that agenda. The second area is around food for public health. And we, we would like to see 75% of the government's Eat Well recommended vegetable consumption is produced sustainably in Wales by 2030. And there's a good, good amount of evidence around the fact that this, this should be possible. And Steve's absolutely right, we're never going to be able to produce our bananas and our avocados in, in Wales sustainably. But there's a lot of produce that we could be producing more sustainably in Wales. And I popped a link in the chat box earlier there to, around some BBC coverage last couple of weeks ago on this, this matter. Then we, we want to, we kind of make sure that we've got a net food, a net zero food system. So there's a lot in the moment talking about the Agriculture White Paper, which is, will be, will, will form the new kind of regime for agriculture in Wales. And that very much focuses on looking at climate change and biodiversity and reflecting that back as kind of a public goods approach, which is, which is great. But actually, we need to be thinking about the food system as a whole. So it's not just about agriculture, but what are those other, other areas, you know, the, if food waste was a country, it would be the third, the third biggest emitter of carbon emissions in the world after China and, and America. So again, you know, it's thinking about those, those broader issues that we have around logistics and supply chains and waste, as well as the emissions that we produce from agriculture. Farming for climate and nature. Again, we want to develop a roadmap by 2022 to adopt the agroecological principles across the whole food system, which includes having everything produced in an agroecological way, which, which basically means making farming work with, with nature so that you have a kind of a, a whole systems approach where you've, you've got mixed farming and you're using, you know, the manure for animals, for example, to nourish the soil for vegetable production and that kind of, kind of thing. Seafood has already been mentioned this morning, and it's really important that we're, we're working out how that we're setting catch limits, which enable fish stocks to be restored and maintained above biomass levels that deliver the maximum sustainable yield. And I was astounded to read in the papers that I had no idea that Wales had such a massive impact on carbon capture in our, in our seas. And if we had the number of whales that we did have in our seas about 20 years ago, they would be capturing the equivalent of Brazil's carbon emissions. So that was a new stat that I learnt at the weekend. And the other piece then is about sustainable food sector jobs and livelihoods. And, you know, we, we cannot continue to have this system where we have supply chains, where, you know, we're exploiting workers in other parts of the world. We can't continue to have a situation where we have people working in the retail sector who are accessing the very food banks that those retailers are supporting because they're not being paid a fair enough wage. So I could go on to give you an example of how we'd bring all this together, but I have a suspect that I'm probably running short on time. So I'll leave it there and maybe leave it for the questions.
Thank you, Katie. That's absolutely fantastic. Yeah. I just need to move on. Sorry. I think it's all so interesting that we'll run out of time otherwise. But thank you so much for that. And pop any questions you've got for Katie in the chat. So but on your notes about food banks, et cetera, I'm going to hand over now to Sarah Germain from Fair Share Cymru. Hi, Sarah. I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of you will have heard of Fair Share's work and collecting food and helping redistribute it. So Sarah, could you tell us about your organisation and the work you do, please?
Yeah, thank, thank you. So, so Fair Share Cymru, we've, we've been going since 2011. So coming up for the 10 years. Starts off really, really small. I think our first month, we did something like two, two tonnes of food. And you'll see how much we've grown as I go through. We believe that no good food should be wasted. And by working towards this, we feel that we turn an environmental problem into a social solution, helping to feed thousands of vulnerable people every day. And we also feel that we have an economic impact in terms of the money saving that we can put into the third sector. I would like to sort of start off by trying to put things in a bit of context. I know Louise earlier mentioned that a third of food globally isn't even eaten. But in Wales, we estimate that there's about 300,000, 400,000 tonnes of food that is wasted each year. And if only 1% of that was edible, it'd be enough to contribute to eight million meals. And then on the other hand, there's 23% of the Welsh population that live in poverty. And we estimate that around about 250,000 of those are in food poverty. You can see the contrast between those figures. And it just doesn't seem to write to us that there's, when there's good quality edible food going to waste, and there's so many people living in poverty, those two things just, just don't seem to sit together with us. And so what we do is essentially really simple. We will take surplus edible food from the food industry, food that would otherwise be going to waste. That can come from manufacturers, wholesalers, farmers, packhouses and distribution centres. And it becomes surplus for a whole And it becomes surplus for a whole host of reasons. So that could be overproduction or over ordering, or surplus demand, perhaps the end of a promotion, all sorts of different reasons. And then we redistribute that to our network of local community organisations. And they're much wider than just food banks. And then organisations that deal with very, with varying and lots of different issues. So we work with homeless hostels, we work with community pantries, we work with drug and alcohol rehabilitation centres, women's refuges, cookery classes, refugee charities, community cafes, school and youth groups, and a whole host of others. And they use that food to make quality food and meals available to the people they support. And they offer much more than food, they offer, offer them support, perhaps move themselves out of poverty, offer them friendship to combat loneliness, skills development, and so much, much more. So the last 12 months, just to sort of summarise what we've been up to, it's been an incredible year for us. Demands skyrocketed in the last 12 months. We've saved over 655 tonnes of food from being wasted. And we distributed enough food to help over 176 community groups and organisations provide over two million meals.
Wow.
Providing food to over 12,500 people every week and saving those community organisations around a million pounds that they can then reinvest in their frontline services. And they also tell us that that food helps them to work with more people, provide food more often, it encourages people to come into their centres so they can access the support that they give, and provide cookery classes so they can give people the skills so they can cook properly and use all the fabulous food coming out of Wales as they move forward. And so going forward, we're looking at expanding our reach across Wales. We've been very much focused in the south east of Wales for the last 10 years. The pandemic has meant that we've done some emergency response work, both in North Wales and in West Wales. So we're looking to make that more permanent. And we're also looking at things like how we can maximise the use of the foods or any surplus surplus that we've got. We want to make use out of that. Is there a way that we can make meals out of that? Is there a way that we can work with organisations to do something good with that surplus surplus, especially things around product, produce and that kind of thing? So that's just an instant nutshell.
That's brilliant, thank you so much, Sarah. Your work is absolutely outstanding there and I'm sure maybe a lot of our clients might be in part of the chain that you're working with as well. That's fantastic. And we've not got much time at all, but I'd like to, if possible, take any questions that there are in the chat or any comments that we have. And if you have got to go off at 11 o'clock, just before, I really would like to bring in Angie, who's got news about a project she's been working with us. Have you got any quick questions there at all, Ebony?
Do you know what, I think if you want to bring Angie in, that would be great.
Okay, and then you can have a look. Yeah, anyone, if you, if you've got time, pop a question in. Angie, are you there today? Angie from the Room to Grow Project, to tell us a bit about their green corridors?
Hi, George, how's it going?
Hi.
Thanks for the introduction. So I'm just renovating our kitchen at Huguen, also in a restaurant in Swansea. So during lockdown, we started a food growing project where we joined up with our local community converting unused concrete front garden spaces and showing the community how to turn them into mini allotments for food resilience. Lockdown made a lot of people turn to growing their own food. The kind of fears around supermarkets and where they get their, their food from, also having that spare time. But what they found is that they didn't have the skills that used to be in the community a lot more, people used to be a lot more self-reliant. And we wanted to show them that it wasn't that hard and that they could use even the small spaces in the front of their homes, which are often laid with concrete or pebble dash or not pebble dash stone, which also has other implications, reduction of biodiversity, increase of flooding, all sorts of things, not to mention some of our areas looking tired and unloved in general. So we rallied some volunteers, built custom planters for each home, partnered with different types of households, some, some small families, some were students, tried to connect with loads of different types of people in the community. And we just started growing. We, we crowdfunded and did six allotment front gardens. And then this, this spring now, we are starting a green corridor initiative where we tackle three streets in, like arterial streets in the, in the area and grow as much food and increase the green space as much as possible in people's front gardens in the next couple of months. So it's going to be an exciting year. Yeah.
That's brilliant, thanks. If you've got a link for Room to Grow, just pop it in the chat, that'd be great and people can have a look if they want to see more. Thank you so much, Angie. And Ebony, have you got any questions there at all for any, any of the last two speakers? And if not, if anyone else wants to bring in, mention any of their sustainability work that they're up to at the moment, that would be great. If you're still looking at that, when I send out the padlock, because we're about to run out of time, I will put in links there. There was a call from Welsh Government for, a call for entries or inquiries to a collaboration project. So if you remember, our last call was all about collaboration and consortia. So there may be an opportunity there for some businesses that, that's specifically food. And the Kickstart Programme, I believe, has been revised. So if you're thinking of, of taking on people, that might be easier for you to, to join that scheme. And also our next employee ownership session will be on the theme of food. And I don't know if you know Trigroy's Waffles, they're a lovely waffle making company over in West Wales, that's an employee owned business. They'll be on that on the 23rd of February, telling you all about how they did that. So that's, I guess, maybe for, for established companies looking to sell to the employees. And I also just want to say thank you so much to everybody who's joined today. I know you're all so busy and juggling loads of different things and it's such a massive topic, it is really hard to kind of balance, but I think we've got a flavour there of people coming from, working on this subject from different areas. So thank you so much for that. And if you've got an idea for the next network that you'd like us to focus on, tell me about it and I'll, I'll look into it and see if we can pick that as a theme. So Ebony, do you have any more comments or, or queries, ideas from, from the chat?
Some great comments in here that might be worth you looking at for future sessions, but there are no specific questions for speakers at this point, I think.
Is that it? Has anybody got any, anything they want to add to the call today or any work they're doing? Anyone just had any funding they want to tell us about? And if not, then we'll let you go. But thanks so much to all our brilliant speakers today. And if you would like to be a speaker, please just pop me a message and we'll try and fit you into the next one. But thank you so much, everybody. I'm going to have a look at all the comments in the chat now.